The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, along with my co-host, Tony Palmieri. And on this edition of I on Oshkosh, we continue to interview candidates who will be on the ballot for the April 5th general election. We're very pleased to welcome in this half hour, school board candidate Lee Wilson. We'll be joined in the second half hour by Ben Schneider II also, who's running for the school board. But again, welcome to Lee Wilson. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm glad to be here. Thanks very much.
I will admit, I, like probably a lot of voters, don't know that much about you, other than what I've just seen in the primary debates and that kind of thing. For someone who's not real familiar with who Lee Wilson is, why don't you give us a little overview, a little snapshot, and tell us why you're running for school board?
Be glad to. I'm new to Oshkosh, or relatively new. I've lived here about eight years. I moved to Oshkosh from the Chicago suburbs. Grew up in the Chicago suburbs most of my life, spent a year in Iowa. And the move was for business reasons. I got a job opportunity up here. And I always felt that there was a reason to come to Oshkosh when I moved up here. I told my wife that Oshkosh wants me here for a reason. And as I kind of watched my children go through school and get educated, and I realized that we had good schools here, I've always been interested in education. I've always been interested in the education process. I thought, why not get involved? So, I'm running for school board because I want to be involved in the school district. From a historical standpoint on my life, I am a vice president of international sales for Alliance Laundry Systems. I graduated from Bradley University with a degree in international studies, and then while working, achieved my MBA from DePaul University in Chicago in marketing, and continue to pursue that professional program in my life. I had two children, both of whom graduated through West High School here in town, and so I have some exposure to the school system. However, I've never been a teacher. I've stood in front of a classroom on occasion. I did teach one class in international sales and marketing for a semester at a junior college, but that's hardly standing in front of students. That's a little bit different environment.
Well, that's not a prerequisite for being on the board.
No, it is not. No, it is not.
You have said, Lee, that you want to see a new vision for our schools and our children. Nice phrase. What does it mean?
Well, like I said, we do have a good school district. And I think one of the blessings that our school district has is the diversity of students. And those students each have diverse needs. They have diverse aspirations for their career. And I'd like to see the school district focus on the children even more than it does now, and provide those education services that will lead to their career aspirations depending on their needs. There'll be students that want to become firemen, military, agricultural workers. There are also students who aspire to go to Yale and Harvard. And I think every one of those students deserves to be addressed to their needs specifically. And I think the school board can help redirect that education process towards that diversity.
Well, what are we currently not doing as regards to that? Are we currently, do we currently not have an environment that is suitable for the child that wants to go to an Ivy League college, as opposed to one who wants to be a fireman? What are we not doing now?
Well, I think that's exactly right, Tony. I think what we do is a very good job hitting the middle. And now that we have Oshkosh East High School, we're addressing some of the needs of the at-risk students coming out of high school. Now, there's this whole group on the other end of the spectrum that aspire to Harvard, Yale, MIT, whatever it might be. And I think we need to find a way to address their needs, so that a 1,500 SAT score is achievable, and we're really focused on that fast-track education program. I think too much right now is pushed off on the parents and the student himself or herself, to try to figure out, how do you go about doing that? And we need to kind of help them move along.
Any thoughts on how we get to that next threshold?
Well, I think there are some things that I have thought about. And again, I'm not an educator. One of the things that we've talked about is the declining enrollment in this community. Perhaps it's time to look at something as unique as a single high school, or a split high school based on those who aspire for a college track, as opposed to those who may aspire for some other career track. But those are all just thoughts and haven't really been sat down with a professional educator to figure out what is the right thing to do.
You said you had two children who graduated from Oshkosh West, a good school. I went there. But some people say that if someone does not have someone in the school system right now, have children in the school system, that they really don't have a vested interest in the school district, and therefore maybe don't have as good a reason to run for school board. I mean, personally, I don't agree with that, but how does Lee Wilson feel about that?
Well, I don't agree with that at all. My belief is that, as a businessman in the general area, that our workforce is going to come from the students that graduate from the high school. So, we have a very strong vested interest to make sure that the students coming out of the high school are educated to meet our needs. They need to be literate in English, literate in math, computer savvy, trainable, flexible. All of those things that businesses expect students to do, we need to watch and help the school district find a way to achieve that.
You've said, and lots of candidates have said, that we need accountability. Explain to us, where is accountability currently lacking in the system?
Well, accountability in an education system is a little tough. In the business world, private industry, it's real simple. Either you hit your numbers or you don't hit your numbers.
Right.
I think one of the areas that we could really focus on for accountability is looking at some of the standardized test scores and looking for improvement, looking for an ACT improvement, looking specifically at the freshmen that fail one or more classes, that that rate has to come down. And if it's not coming down, why not? What are you doing to resolve that issue? And where do we come to the dead end of it and say, hey, you're not achieving it. We need to make a change.
Do you believe that the current superintendent or administration in school board are not doing enough in these areas?
I think the board, I think the administration could do more. Now, I do know that there has been a pilot program at West High School that seems to be very successful, and I'm really excited about that. But that's really the first step. And we've talked about freshmen who fail one or more classes for quite some time in this community. And I think that having 20 or 21 percent, or even 22 percent, freshmen fail one or more classes is a chronic problem. And that has to be broken.
Okay, sure. What do you see as some of the other pressing issues facing this particular school district in the next couple of years, other than what we've talked about, and the obvious one being budgetary issues?
Well, budgetary issues, the declining enrollment, and how that's going to affect the budgetary issues, and how that affects class sizes. I think maintenance of the buildings is a critical issue. To find out that we have severe roofing problems on certain areas of certain buildings, at this point, is a sign of somebody missed something somewhere. And I'd like to see that addressed. Now, I know they're addressing some of it, but are they addressing all of it? We had to close Sunset School because we had a mold issue. Now, how did that get so far that we ran into mold in a school that became a health issue for students and teachers, and not have addressed that sooner? Now, sure, there's that budgetary concern. I'm not going to go out and just spend money crazily, but we do have to have some priorities in the school system. And I think that's where they've missed a lot of issues.
Now, you are running against two incumbents
Yes, sir.
for two open seats, and that would be Mr. McDermott and Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Now, the fact that you're running indicates that you must think there's something wrong with their performance. You'd like to see one of them removed. So, why doesn't, why don't you tell us, what have Mr. McDermott and/or Mr. Schneider not done well?
Well, I wouldn't say that it's an individual indictment of those two gentlemen. I did not run because I thought one or the other was a particularly bad board member. I ran because I felt the board itself, in its entirety, was missing the point on priorities, and direction, and focus, and vision, and was trying to micromanage too many issues that the administration should be doing.
You don't like micromanagement on the part of the board?
No, sir.
So, does that mean, then, that you will give a lot of weight to what the administration says in key issues? If Ron Heilmann says, we need to do this, what is your approach? Trust the administration?
Well, no. I think you have to challenge the administration, just like you would in the private sector. You challenge every assumption, you question, you ask for backup, you ask for, you know, was this a new program run in another school district?
Let me ask the question this way. In the last year or so, in your opinion, what has the board micromanaged on?
Well, I think they're too involved in some of the issues related to changing the nickname at West High School. I thought that was a complete loss of priority focus there. That was not a pressing issue. When you didn't have a contract with the teachers' union, you didn't have a budget that was balanced and firmed up. I think those are some of the issues. Other issues that I have concerns about is their involvement in the decisions on some of the curriculum that's chosen. I would defer to the teaching groups to tell me, this is the way we should teach our students. This new curriculum is good. Now, again, you challenge, you question, you poke, you prod, but far be it from any of us on the board to come out and say, hey, I know how to teach students. Our job is to provide resources, to allow the teachers to do their job, to allow the administration to do their job. And then to come back, how did you do? Did the program work? Did you achieve your goals? And that's how you rate the performance, and then you make your decisions.
So, something like, I'll give you an example, Cheryl. Like, a couple of years ago, when they okayed the everyday math, Lee Wilson would put a lot of trust in the pedagogy experts, I'll call them. But you wouldn't then substitute your judgment as a school board member. If the experts tell you, everyday math is a good thing, you'd go with it?
I would ask, when they came to me with a proposal, I would ask, where has it been used? What have been the results of that program in those school districts? What's the generally accepted perception of the program? And then if you really can convince me that that's the right way to go, I'd go. But there is then the follow-up. Did it? One year later, two years later?
That's the accountability.
That's the accountability issue. And you have to ask those questions.
All right, Cheryl.
The school board has also kind of gotten a black eye over the last few years. Not this last year in particular, but especially under Karen Bowen's presidency. They really got a black eye in the way they deal with citizens. How do you think that the school board is currently dealing with citizens? How do you feel their performance is there?
Well, I think they've shown some tremendous improvement in communication. They're making the effort. I know they've got a private, local firm helping them with some public relations issues, and that's a large step. One of my objections has been that even when my kids were in school, short of the newsletter from West High School, or whatever school they happened to be in, I got very little communication as to what was going on in the schools. I didn't know. So, I'm running because I wanted to know. That's part of the reason. And I think communication directly to the taxpayers, to the citizens of our city, is important. More open discussions, maybe open forums, like we had last night at Oakwood School to discuss the budget. Those kind of things can do a lot. But newsletters, the website is in desperate need of enhancement and improvement. It needs to communicate meaningful information, not soft visionary thoughts.
Do you think that it's, you brought up about the public relations firm that they're dealing with, and I've kind of beaten up on that a little bit over the last few months, because personally, I don't think it's necessary. You know, we've got other very successful school districts in the area, and they've never entertained the thought of having a PR firm, and in all likelihood, never will. Do you think that that's a necessary thing to have in a school district?
Well, I think at this point, they were kind of at a loss. The school board was kind of at a loss, is how do we break this image of poor communication? And they had a choice. They could have hired a PR person, or they could have consulted with somebody. And I would prefer to call it a consulting relationship. This is how you go about communicating. This is the kind of information that's important for citizens to know and to hear about. So, I don't think it's a bad thing at this point.
The school board taxes went up 9 percent last year.
Yes, sir.
Was that acceptable?
Not in my tax bill, but I look at it in two ways. I look at it as an investment in the future. As I say, we were talking a little earlier before the show, that my belief is that the schools can drive the future of the city. And if we want Oshkosh to be a world-class city, and to grow, and to attract people to move here, the one main ingredient is the school. We know that when business people get transferred to an area, as did I and my wife, the first question out of our mouth was, where are the best schools? Within a radius of where my job was. And we settled in Oshkosh because the schools were the best in that area where I could afford to drive to work. And I think that's very critical if you're going to attract top-level people to your city. If you're going to attract a business to build a new factory or a new office structure here in town, you want to offer them all sorts of benefits.
Right.
Education is the first one.
So, if you're on the board, and Brad Kaufman and Ron Heilmann make the case to you that we need a 9 percent for excellence, it sounds like you're talking about excellence in the district.
Yes, excellence in the district.
You'd vote for it?
I would.
If the case is made to you?
If the case is made, after I poked and prodded at it, and asked questions and challenged individual line items in the budget, yes.
All right.
Is there anything that you would have done differently with respect to this 9.01 percent tax increase this last year?
Not having been on the board, I didn't have the opportunity to poke and prod at it, and ask those challenging questions. But yes, I would have communicated better as to what the needs were, and what the money was going to.
Currently, Lee, there's a battle of tax freezes going down in Madison. And this is important for our local school board to be aware of, because the Doyle budget, it's a tax freeze, but he wants to fully, or at least two-thirds, fund the public schools. The Republican freeze doesn't fund the schools. I mean, do you support the Doyle proposal?
I don't support a tax freeze at all, quite honestly.
You don't?
No. I think part of the problem that local communities all face is the federal government sends out federal unfunded mandates, cuts funding to the state. What's the state do to balance their budget? They have no choice but to cut their funding to local municipalities, schools, universities, and the like. And then they turn right around and say, well, it's up to you. And then they turn around and tell us, we can't raise our own revenue to keep the schools at top-flight performance, or our streets repaired, or whatever it might be. I think that's a critical mistake on the part of a state government, or even the federal government.
So, you're against the taxpayer bill of rights, then, too?
Yes.
Okay. Cheryl?
Would you be in support? I know in years past, there's been a lot of talk about possible referendum for a new school. You know, we passed a referendum, and then a subsequent referendum failed. But there's still been some talk about it, off and on. Would Lee Wilson be in support of a referendum for a new school if that should come up, and you're elected to the board?
It's a premature question for me to address, to the extent that we have 17 elementary schools right now. Some are underutilized, some are overutilized, some are at capacity and really stretched. And I'd like to see a utilization analysis first of each school, look at the cost to operate them, the cost to bus students to them, the cost of administering them, and then we can make the decision. But we also have to look at the physical structures. How are the roofs? How's the heating system doing? Where do we have to spend money to repair?
What's your definition of neighborhood schools? And, you know, how can we meet that definition and still be cost-effective?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked that, because I have had conversations with my friends and neighbors and say, I don't know what a neighborhood school is. I really don't. When I went to school, I walked a mile to school. That was not a problem. That was considered my neighborhood school. Here, it seems to be not so much a neighborhood school as, this is the boundary that we've always had, and don't change the boundary because it might affect my child. I think what we have is some historically-placed schools, for a lot of reasons, that present challenges to us as to how do we divvy up the children between those schools to get the best education. I'd like to stay away from the issue of neighborhood school, and talk about where can you go to get your son or daughter the best education possible.
Okay.
Lee, let's talk a little bit about No Child Left Behind. As you know, this is a dramatic reform, or deform, of education, on your perspective. The National Conference of State Legislatures came out with a report recently, and they said that "No Child Left Behind" has undermined school reform efforts that were already underway, posed unnecessary bureaucratic requirements, failed to provide enough money to get the work done, and generally usurped state and local control of public schools. Do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
It's a disaster.
Well, the spirit, Tony, was right. We don't want to leave any child behind.
Yes, nice phrase.
We want to educate every child, and so do I. That's part of the diversity that we talked about earlier. But to have an unfunded mandate that you're going to improve every year, every year, every year, we know from reality that, you know, some years, the classes just don't perform as well.
And if you miss the mark, then you're penalized.
And then you're penalized for it.
But the legislature passed it.
Yes.
I think the likelihood of reforming it under the Republican Congress is probably not all that great.
It's not going to happen.
So, we're stuck with it?
We're stuck with it.
So, what does the school board do?
The school board has to address the issue. We have no choice. We've got the bull by the horns, and we're going to have to wrestle with it. And it's going to be more demanding as the years go on. Now, they're going to have more and more testing required.
Yep.
And unfortunately, this forces some teachers to teach to the test, instead of teaching to the students. And I think that's where it misses its mark. We're not teaching to the student, we're teaching to the test, and that leaves children behind.
By teaching to the test?
By teaching to the test.
And you think there's too much testing in No Child Left Behind?
Too much standardized testing that will come back to haunt us. I think every city's different. Every city has its own challenges. Every city has its own diversity of students, or non-diversity of students, as the case may be. And it's, how can the children of Milwaukee be compared to the children of Oshkosh, be compared to the children of Green Bay? I don't know that you can.
Um, Lee, you had mentioned a little earlier that you felt that a lot of time was spent not focusing on important issues, but wrapped up in changing the logo at Oshkosh West. There's another issue right now that's kind of being bandied about at Oshkosh West, and that's whether or not to rename the gymnasium after Coach Steve Randall. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, certainly, my condolences to the Randall family, and it was a very unfortunate circumstance that came along. I did not know Coach Randall personally. By all accounts, he was a well-respected gentleman, a great teacher, a great coach, and that's all fine and dandy. But is it really necessary that we talk about renaming a gymnasium after a teacher, a coach, when other excellent teachers may have passed during their tenure? Is it really necessary to focus on that when we're short $500,000 to do CapEx funding for building repairs and maintenance? That's where the priority issue comes to play, is yes, people want to honor Coach Randall, and we should honor him at an appropriate time. But maybe the school board isn't the group that ought to be doing it. Maybe renaming the gym isn't the way to do it. Maybe there's another way to honor him. But the school board has its job. It should be focused on those important, critical issues that it faces right now.
Okay.
Where do you identify yourself among the current board members? The way I would define them, I would put Karen Bowen, Dennis Kavanaugh, and Amy Weinsheim in one group. And I'd put Ben Schneider and Dan Becker as kind of like the no-votes. And I'd put Mr. McDermott almost like in a category by himself. Where do you identify on that board?
I'm independent. I'm going to take every instance, every issue, on its own basis and its own merit. I'm not going to align myself with any one group, or not align myself with any one group, because I'll be all over the board on certain issues, quite honestly.
Okay. Do you support the Sage program?
I don't have enough details on the Sage program. I don't know how much it costs us. I don't know how much state aid we get out of it. In general, yes, I think it's a good program.
Yeah, let me ask the question a different way. The principle of small class sizes are better. Do you support that principle?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Cheryl?
Okay. The City of Oshkosh currently has 19 TIF districts.
I always laugh when you say that, because it just seems like such a large amount for a city our size.
It is a huge amount, as far as I'm concerned. But in any event, I realize you're not running for city council. But TIF districts, you know, 19, four of which are closed, and the other 15 are open. And they do affect not only the county, but they affect the school district. And, you know, you guys in the school district, if you're on the school board, you're going to be scrouching for every penny that you can possibly get. How do you feel about that many TIF districts, and another one probably going to be created sometime this year? How do you feel about that many TIF districts, and how it affects the school district as a whole?
Obviously, I'd be greedy, and I'd like to have all the tax possible for the school district, because I think it's the most important thing in the city and in the area. There are certain times that I suspect you might have to incent somebody with some sort of incentive program on taxes, and where it has a proven payoff over the run of the TIF district or the program, it might, I might be able to be convinced that it's good for us. But in general, I find that to be misdirected management of the city funds.
Okay.
Do you think that we need a principal in every school building?
No.
We don't?
No.
So, do you think one principal could take care of two schools, three, more?
I think it depends on the specifics of the school, and the specifics of the students for that school or those schools. You also have to look at the issue of geography. How far is it? We currently have a shared principal between Lakeside and Green Meadow, and there's a little bit of transportation issue there. There's also the issue of, what happens if something occurs in the building when the principal is at the other school? Well, there ought to be clear lines of demarcation as to who takes over, who's responsible, who's accountable for activity.
But what if it became, what if it became clear to you that the majority of parents want a principal in each building, regardless of the geography? Would you then, as a school board member, say, well, I got to go with what I think is right, even though the majority of the parents want this?
Well, certainly, we're going to listen to the parents and hear what they have to say. But I'm also going to talk to the administration, talk to the teachers, do some of my own research, and then we're going to make a decision that's best for all of Oshkosh, including finances.
Right.
Okay.
You got to keep that in mind.
What's your position on QEO, and should it be done away with?
Yes.
Okay. That was a very short answer.
But in order to do away with QEO, doesn't the legislature also have to do away with revenue caps?
Yes.
So, you support getting away with, doing away with revenue caps also?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And that does mean we could be looking at major tax increases. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I'm also in favor of the state living up to its commitment of two-thirds funding.
Right.
They made that commitment years ago.
They did.
And I think they backed off of it. Bright or wrong, they did, and we had to deal with it. I'm more of a local guy. I want to take responsibility for my city and what happens here. And every time the federal government comes in and says, no, no, you have to do it this way, or the state comes in and tells us how to manage a business or an education system, it just seems to get so confusing. And why can't we just say, this is Oshkosh School District, let us run our district?
See, the Republicans used to believe that, you know, local control of schools, and I don't know what happened.
I think it's a perfectly logical Republican thought process.
Local control.
Personally, local control, less government is better.
They were a lot more fun when they believed that.
Right.
They don't believe it anymore.
Yeah. We're just about out of time. Why don't you take, oh, about 45 seconds or so, and just look right into camera three, and tell the public why they should vote for Lee Wilson on Tuesday, April 5th?
Well, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Tony, for allowing me to be here today. And I think it's important for the citizens of Oshkosh, the taxpayers of Oshkosh, the students of Oshkosh, and the teachers of Oshkosh, to know that I am fully supportive of education. I think that our diversity of students, our opportunities for improvement in the school system are there. I think they're achievable. Lee Wilson can help the board achieve those, that improvement and those growths in education. And I think it's vital to the sustaining of our Oshkosh economy and our city, that we do those kind of things and improve the school, because it will attract business, it will attract people to Oshkosh.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much for being here.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for having me, Cheryl.
It was nice to have met you.
Tony, thank you.
And we're going to take a very short break. When we come back, we'll be joined by one of the incumbents running for the Oshkosh School Board, Ben Schneider II. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.
We just escaped.
I escaped.
I escaped.
By foot.
Run across, boarded.
I couldn't practice my religion.
I was put to work in forced labor camps.
If I stay in Cambodia, I would have been dead by now.
If you think differently, then you're an enemy.
If you know how to read and write, your dad, you speak German, your dad.
The only way to express what I wanted to do was to get out.
I got to the country when I was about 14 years old.
I was 20.
I was 24.
I came here with nothing. No money, no English.
America stood for freedom. It stands for freedom, and that's what all my generation, young generation, wanted to be there.
For the first time, I felt like I have a right to be on this earth.
Sure, you can do whatever you want to do.
I love my life here. I feel at home.
I'm free to do what I want.
Freedom to me means my life.
How you doing?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-4-A-CHILD. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts.
Poor nutrition today will increase Sarah's chances of anemia, add to her health care costs, sick days, even stunt her ability to learn. And the thing is, Sarah's not even born yet. Get proper nutrition before it's too late. Call or visit WIC. WIC provides nutrition information, health care referrals, even food. Your child has you, and you have WIC.
Back to the second half of ION Oshkosh. Cheryl Hans along with Tony Palmieri. And we are now joined by Ben Schneider II, who happens to be one of the two incumbents running for the Oshkosh School Board. Ben, thank you very much for being here.
My pleasure.
It's a pleasure to have you. I think most people probably know who you are and what you stand for. But for anyone who may be new to the area, why don't you take a minute or so and tell folks who Ben Schneider II is and why you're seeking your second term for the Oshkosh School Board?
Well, I'm a product of the Oshkosh Public Schools. I was, I went through, started in kindergarten, graduated in, you know, senior year at Oshkosh North High School, went to Emeline Cook, Webster, and North High. Trying to talk fast, because you gave me a minute. But I'm also graduated from U of I Oshkosh, married, I have three children, two of which are currently enrolled in elementary school. My third will be entering in about two years. I am married with a wonderful wife, Amy, self-employed financial advisor. My wife is a teacher in another school district, so I think that gives me a unique perspective. But I am able to vote on all the issues because she's in another school district. I am running because I feel my experience I have obtained the last three years will continue to be of benefit to the school district, continue to represent the needs of the parents, the community, and provide a good balance. And I feel I do provide a good balance, because I'm only one of, well, I'm the only one running for a school board that has kids in the system, and so I have a vested interest, and I'm impacted by decisions I make. And I just want to continue to apply the experience and build on that for the next three years.
I want to talk about that for just a second, because, I mean, are you suggesting that someone who doesn't have kids in the district does not have a vested interest? I, for example, don't. But yet, the biggest share of my property tax bill goes to support these schools. And I do have nephews in the school district. I have a niece who will be entering the district. I think I have a vested interest.
Well, I didn't, I'm not suggesting that, and I, but I think that, I think a board with no, no board, a board that has seven board members with no children in the system is bad. Conversely, it's like a common council that has seven members that are from the town of Algoma. You know, everybody's impacted by the educational decisions we make. But frankly, I'm pretty passionate about some of the decisions, like five board members in the past year cut over 24 hours of instructional time away from our kids. And frankly, I oppose that, and I'm somewhat disappointed in that, because that's over a week's worth of instructional time, because it's about, kids receive about four and a half hours per day. That's almost a week. And we're at the bottom of the FEA, the Fox Valley Association for Instructional Minutes, minutes above the minimum, the state imposed minimum. And I think it's important to be impacted by those decisions. I'm not saying we should have seven, you know, I'm just thinking, that's what I bring, and that's why I'm unique, because I am impacted that way.
Okay, Ben, as an incumbent, you do have a record now.
Sure.
And you did vote against the budget, right, that raised the taxes 9%?
I was, I was on my annual family vacation, but I would have voted against that, and I made that very clear in our committee meetings.
Right. Now, you would have voted against it, which I assume means that you would have cut more out of the budget.
I would have restricted the spending increases, which...
Okay, like, for example, what spending increases would you have restricted?
Since you want to talk about a voter record, which is certainly fair game, and I appreciate that, I did not support the pay contract, or the administrator, excuse me, the administrator contracts or the teachers' union contracts. We went above, the board majority went above QEO, and the teachers' contracts, the largest percentage of the budget. I did not support that. So I wanted to restrict that increase. I did not support...
All right. But in the last half hour, one of the challengers, or the challenger was here, Mr., one of the challengers, because there's two challengers.
Sure.
Mr. Wilson was here, and he essentially argued that we have to pay for excellence. Was that essentially his argument? You don't believe that. You think we're paying our teachers and our administrators too much?
Well, let's define what we're paying them, since no one seems to know. Average central office administrator makes over seven figures with benefits. The average teacher makes $48,000 a year with benefits for a 35-hour contract work week. And one of our board members that is a retired teacher was able to retire at age 55, and now we're paying their health insurance until Medicare kicks in, which is 65. Most people in the community don't make those kind of wages. I think that's a very fair wage increase, wage package. And I don't necessarily equate what we pay someone with excellence.
But you're, right, but you're, so your argument is that we could get the same level of quality that we have if we paid less? Is that essentially what you're arguing?
No, my argument is, there's not necessarily a correlation. What I'm saying is, well, actually, what I'm really saying is, we should pay our staff what the taxpayers can afford. And you say this challenger that said that, I presume it's Mr. Wilson. He also said the 9% tax increase was reasonable.
He did say that, yeah.
And, well, my hat's off, if you think so you can get elected with a 9% increase being reasonable, tell that to the senior citizens that are in a fixed income, those that are, tell them to the Leach employees or the WAMCO, or, you know, the employees at a lot of different area businesses that are no longer, they're actually unemployed. I don't think that's reasonable. The problem we have with their budget, the last six years, and I just ran the numbers today, because I want to be fresh for this meeting, our increase, the increase in spending annually for the last six years has been about 4.2%. Historically, inflation's 3%. On a $100 million budget, 1% above inflation is $1 million. We've outspent, we've outspent inflation on the budget the last six years by over $8 million. And I have a higher standard for other people's money, and unfortunately, the board majority, obviously other candidates, don't. And to call a 9% increase reasonable, I would say 70 to 75% of the community disagree with that. And if they want to pay more in taxes, they should write dollars.
So should we, so would you support layoffs of staff or pay cuts? And what do you want to see happen with salaries?
We need to restrict the increases. We cannot afford to pay 4.2% increases. Let's dial it back to maybe 3.8%. So I'll be really clear on this. We need to restrict the increases. That's not a cut. That's a restriction in an increase over next year. And when 85% of this budget's salary benefits, and in terms of layoffs, you don't have to do layoffs. Every year, we have anywhere from 15 to 30 people who retire. Through attrition, we cannot fill those positions. So that's not a cut. That's not a layoff.
So what would be, what would be an acceptable tax increase to you? 9% was unacceptable.
Well, actually, this year, I said I'd go up to 2%, and I think we need to dial that back, because even 2% increase, I think that's high, given the fact it's after 9%. That's a two-year average of over 5%, which is way above inflation. And, you know, again, it's, you have to have a higher standard for other people's money. You can't just keep throwing dollars. And let's just quantify for a second, and sorry to interrupt you there, Cheryl. We are, have, we have record budget, over $100 million, record spending increases, record per pupil spending, and we also seem to have record deficits in a period of decline in enrollment. We need to look at more innovative ways to deliver great education in a reasonable budget that taxpayers can afford.
You had suggested about, you know, dialing back, as you, as you use the phrase, the wage increases, the salary increases for teachers and so forth, to 3.8%. Now, that is what the QEO says that wages and benefits have to come to. Do you then support QEO?
No. It's QEO, any profession that gives you a floor guaranteed increase of no less than 3.8%, that's absurd. We should, we should offer increases for what, we should offer increases to our staff, what the community can afford. It's so easy at the board level just to, in fact, I brought a, the July, well, let me back up. It's just so easy for me to say yes and just levy it on the backs of the taxpayers. And that's, that's the problem. That's why you see 9% increases. So I don't support QEO. It's a floor by which we got to pay for increases. I think we shouldn't have QEO. And if, you know, if the taxpayers, the environments as such, where we can offer 3% increases or 4% increases, the economy's booming, you know, it should reflect what the community can afford. And if that is, you know, a 3% increase or a 5% increase, that's, every year, you have to roll up your sleeves and construct a budget and set the levy.
So we should do away with QEO then?
I'd like to state, I'd like to see our state legislatures do away with QEO.
Do you support the Taxpayer Bill of Rights?
Yes. And it should be tied towards increases in personal incomes. The problem is, we have fiscally promiscuous local elected bodies that just tax and tax, and without any ramifications for how that's going to impact the taxpayers.
You'd say, you'd say that the school board, in your three years, has been fiscally promiscuous?
I think they've demonstrated, well, just look at the makeup. Look at the expertise of the Board of Education. Look at where their expertise lies. If you look at the Northwestern July 27 recap of the board vote, it said the board approved a $100 million budget without any debate. I happened to be absent from that meeting. I'm sure if I was at that meeting, there would have been a debate. It's pretty sad when we have record, a 9%, a 9% increase in our budget that leads to a substantial tax increase, that there's no debate. And I think when there's no debate, that tells you that either people aren't doing their homework, they're just rubber-stamping things, or they don't understand.
But you would, you would rather have Madison tell school districts, "You can't go above a certain point," rather than have the local voters be able to either keep Ben Schneider in office, because people like him know how to take care of our money, or maybe they want to vote for people who raise, who vote for 9% increases. You want Madison to make the decision for us.
I didn't say that.
But that's what Tabor is, isn't it?
Well, no, it provides reasonable restrictions on what people can...
But why can't you, as the elected official, locally set the restrictions? Why do you need Madison to set it for you?
Well, because it's an additional safety step. And then you have Tabor, and then I guess you can go to referendum to exceed revenue caps, which we can do now. I think it's come to that, unfortunately, Tony, because you look at the tax increase on your, the property tax increase was 6.6% if you look at all the different parties, and something has to, something has to occur. What you have is these politicians, local elected officials, that say one thing, then they do another thing when they're elected. And I would argue that...
Give an example. What do you mean, they say one thing and do another?
Well, they do their election-year transformation, you know, when people call, you know, three years ago, just look at, look at the voting record of a, I'm not going to name names, okay?
Why not?
Why not?
Come on.
You were getting there.
I'm here to talk about myself.
Okay.
It's, then, the problem is, we have local elected officials that say one thing. They get elected, they do something for about two and a half years, and then they make their election-year transformation, that I'm fiscally responsible, I want to focus on accountability. And I would, I think I've been very consistent my three years. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people that dislike me, and that's why it's good we have four candidates for them to pick from. But, you know, I, I want the best education possible for my kids, for all the, for all our 10,300 kids. But I think we can do it in a very, in a much more responsible environment that gets better results and better prepares our students for the, for the next phase of their, their life after senior year.
But instead of passing Tabor, don't you think the Madison Legislature would be better just fully funding the two-thirds cost of education? They haven't done that.
Well, we're, I think we're at, what, 62%? So we're pretty close. We're within 1% of the two-thirds, or, excuse me, we're within 4% so...
They haven't been funding the two-thirds for the last five or six years.
Right. I guess, I can worry about being a local elected official, you know, holding the local system accountable. I vote for my state assembly, my state senators, based on, you know, based on that. But that's really not even a school board issue. Tabor's really not even a school board issue, because that's more of a state assembly, state senator issue.
But it will have a dramatic impact on schools.
Yeah, it'd force them to be much more accountable, like No Child Left Behind, which, which is a good thing.
Oh, okay, let's talk about that. We raised that, okay.
Let's go.
Go right ahead.
You like No Child Left Behind, right? You've called it a very good system that it, for local education standards, right?
Well, what I said about No Child Left Behind is it focuses school districts to get back to the basics.
Okay.
To focus on, you know, well, by 2014, be 100% proficient in math and reading.
Okay.
Or face, or not, and make progress towards that, or face...
But listen to this. The National Conference of State Legislatures, it's got over 3,600 Republicans and over 3,600 Democrats as members. They described this law recently as flawed, convoluted, and unconstitutional. They came out with a 77-page report that said, "No Child Left Behind has undermined school reform efforts that were already underway in many states, posed unnecessary bureaucratic requirements, failed to provide enough money to get the work done, and generally usurped state and local control of public schools." That's Republicans and Democrats.
Yeah.
You don't, you think their critique is wrong?
I don't agree with all Democrats or all Republicans.
But you think they're wrong? This is, this is...
Okay, well, let me interrupt you there. If, if the Oshkosh School District has such a problem with No Child Left Behind, don't take the $490,000 of federal money, because it comes with strings attached. Don't take the money if you don't want the mandates. What educational community wants is the money without any accountability. And it's pretty sad the Board of Education has to develop accountability standards. We have to say, "We're going to, we want you to restructure 612. We want you to address the dismal freshman failure rate." It should not take local school boards. We're not educators. I'm a financial advisor, and yeah, I slept at a Holiday Inn Express a couple months ago, but I'm not an expert in this. The fact is, we have to, it should not take a local school board to say to administration or the, or the district, you know, 30% of our freshmen fail, 30% of our freshmen failing at least one class or more freshman year is unacceptable. Develop a plan. It should never come to that. So, you know, I'm all for more, more standards, more accountability, because ultimately, it's called No Child Left Behind. It improves student learning. It's good for students. It's not no administrator left behind or no teacher left behind, and there's going to be serious consequences. That has actually been demonstrated to increase test score or increased performance in math in particular.
So you don't think that No Child Left Behind is like the mother of all unfunded mandates?
Well, $490,000 is not an unfunded mandate. And like I said, if you don't like it, don't take the money.
But, but Ben, when, when a school district then fails in a certain area, the repercussion is that they're punished. And that in turn punishes the students even more. So how is this helping those students who are already, we'll call them, at risk?
How does it punish the student?
It's taking some of the funding away.
Well, I disagree. I respectfully disagree.
Well, that's fine, but that's, I mean, that's one of the complaints that so many administrators have about No Child Left Behind.
Sure. But, well, it's not the silver bullet for education, but it raises standards. It focuses districts to get back to the basics. And I think that is a good thing for students.
Okay. The city of Oshkosh currently has 19 TIF districts, 14 of which are open, and one of which may very well be on the verge of being created here. Now, these TIF districts, even though they're created by the city, they do affect the school district and the county, and both of those governmental bodies have to sign off on TIF districts that are being created. Obviously, they affect the school district then. So how do you feel about the TIFs that we have in the city of Oshkosh? And do you think that there needs to be some more care taken when the city creates one?
Well, I don't follow the city issues enough to, to give you a strong yes or no. I do my best, because, you know, obviously, I'm trying to enter in a contract for the next three years. I don't want people to have any question. But, you know, TIFs, generally speaking, if they, you know, if they do what they, with the stated objectives, well, that's great. The problem that I see with, with the city issues with TIFs is nationwide, TIFs have been used to create jobs. I don't see a lot of TIFs locally being used to create jobs. To create jobs, you expand, obviously, the economic base, the, you know, the, you know, draw more people in the community through jobs. So, you know, generally speaking, I haven't followed it enough to say, you know, it's a concern. The fact is, obviously, we don't get that incremental increase in the revenue for 20 years of the life of the TIF. And so I guess I really don't know how to answer that question.
Ben, let's talk a little bit about your style on the board. I mean, some people believe that you're a little antagonistic on the board. Let me give an example. I was watching a school board meeting recently, and you came up with this proposal that we ought to allow people who want to volunteer to pay more taxes to pay it, because you've been in a workshop where I believe some people said that they'd pay more taxes to support education. So you went into the board and said, "Well, look, why don't we create a fund to let them pay?" Why aren't you just like being a wise guy at that point?
No, I actually, I'm generally concerned. The fact is, Tony...
But weren't you just kind of like tweaking the people who made that suggestion in a way?
No, I actually want to do that. I think that if people want to contribute more money, and I don't know why someone had a problem with that. We had a workshop, or, excuse me, we had a public forum or a town hall-style meeting regarding the budget. And of the 25 people there, nine spoke, and eight of them all said, "Raise my taxes." And, you know, those same people seem to have, actually, the majority of them were teachers. They have such a difficult time paying more for health insurance, but they want us to raise their taxes. Well, let's raise your taxes. I think...
But they didn't say, "Ben, go in front of the next board meeting and try to create a voluntary account that we can put money into." They didn't say that, right?
Well, of course not. I, I'm, I'm trying to look for ways to raise revenue for the district. And, you know, I, I'm not trying to be a wise guy. But, you know, I don't take myself, I don't take myself so seriously either. You know, it's, when you're, when you're at the losing end of 6-1 or 5-2 votes for three years, you know, you're trying to maintain a good.
Well, that's the other thing. Let, let's, let's put it that way. Suppose you were in the majority. Suppose there were another three people on the board that saw things the way you see them. What would change? What would you do differently on this board?
Well, accountability would change.
Well, how so?
For example, a new program the district rolled out to the last five years was the Everyday Math Program, Chicago Math in the, in the K-5 in, in elementary school. I haven't seen a very strong program evaluation component for that new program. I'm very concerned what is, are we achieving success with that program? All, all anecdotal evidence suggests we are. And piggybacking on that, we just, we just implement, or just approved in middle school, a math program that will complement the K-5 program. We just approved it five years later. And, you know, I think accountability would change. Fiscal responsibility, I would not, I, I think we're a little top-heavy in administration. I did not support the one- and two-year contracts last board meeting. So now, for the next two years, for the next one to two years, we can't change any administration, we can't make any reductions in administration. I know that Elm Brook School District just laid off an administrator for $100,000. That's where a lot of money is. So, you know, also being much more responsible to the, to the taxpayer. I think we can do more with less. And, you know, I wasn't really prepared for, for that question, but I, I think accountability, fiscal responsibility, getting back to the basics, and just, just a vision to, to really focus on student achievement versus always trying to get more money.
What would you say to the criticism that you want to micromanage the administration?
Well, I say if they're gonna, if, if they would manage, I wouldn't micro. I don't think we micromanage. And again, back to my point of the, the school board having to say, let's address the, the high school transition problem. Let's restructure our middle school, the 612. We shouldn't have to do that. They should say, hey, we have a problem with freshman, with our transition rates. The board shouldn't have to, to do that because there's a lag time there. And so in the absence of us suggesting that, in fact, I led the charge on the at-risk restructuring. I asked for it in a workshop about two and a half years ago. And then, then we subsequently made that a priority. That shouldn't take a board member to do that. And I would, and I, I just, I don't agree with it, there's micromanaging. I think it's, I oversee and I try to hold accountable those individuals for achieving the stated results of the outcomes that our students deserve.
Sure.
Ben, over the past few years, the school board's kind of gotten a black eye and taken a little bit of a beating because of the way it, it deals with citizens, in particular, at meetings. Now, that has changed somewhat in the last year or so since Tom McDermott's taken over as president and, and you as vice president. What, you know, how do you feel that the board is, is doing right now with respect to dealing with citizens? Do you think it's on the right track? Are there changes that you'd like to see? What are your thoughts there?
Well, I think three years ago, when I first got on that year, was, was, was pretty poor. In fact, you talk about antagonistic. I, I don't, I don't think I'm antagonistic. I think, you know, I think I have a pretty good sense of humor, but I don't, I don't think I'm antagonistic. I think Mr. McQ did a fantastic job that, that, the next year. And I think it's, I think it's going pretty well. And I think citizens are allowed to come and express their opinions. And I, I'm pleased.
Do you think that we need a principal in every school building?
I doubt it. When you look at, right now, Carl Trager, for example, has 500 students in their elementary school with one principal. Should we have 120 students school with one principal? I think it should be really defined by the needs of that school. And if the needs are at the school are so, are as such where there's a disproportionate number of, for example, there's a special ed population, there's really additional needs, then the answer would be yes. But just to make that statement, you know, no or yes, you have to look at the needs of that school.
Okay. What about the SAGE program? You've been critical of the SAGE program in the past, haven't you?
Well, I've questioned it.
Okay.
And if questioning means critical, I guess I'm guilty, but I.
I mean, do you think that there's too much hype associated with small class size?
Well, I think the problem with SAGE, and as you know, SAGE is in, in elementary school in K-3, 15 kids in a class. I think just to say that, you know, that these, these students come from a quote-unquote low socioeconomic area, therefore, they need to have lower class sizes, I think that's somewhat, that's somewhat, that's just the wrong position to take. I don't think people are destined for failure just because that they're necessarily, because their zip code's 54902 versus 04. And the problem, like, for example, for SAGE at Webster Stanley, over 40% of those, 60%, excuse me, the majority of the students at Webster Stanley are not quote-unquote socio-economically disadvantaged, but yet it's a SAGE school. I think we should look at programs that target the specific needs of children versus just lumping out everybody in a program and saying, hey, this is what we're trying to do.
Okay. Thanks, Cheryl.
What is your definition of neighborhood schools? And, you know, how, how can we meet that definition while remaining cost-effective?
Well, my definition would be our existing infrastructure that we have it. And how, how can we achieve that?